Let me just say that what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do this a little bit differently than I ordinarily do. Because I know we've got a lot of people here who are either already clients of ours or have attended prior meetings. So what I'm gonna start with, when I get going here, I'm gonna start with a few updates on the bill and the debris removal program. And then that way, those of you who have already hired us or heard the other, the other things, you can leave if you want and you won't miss anything. Okay? So again, welcome and I'd like everybody to know if you want, we're gonna be holding a live town hall meeting on September 30th, that's Friday evening at 5:30 PM in Mora at the lecture hall at the Morris High School. And that will be, I believe it's at 5:30 PM. So anybody who wants to come to that is certainly welcome, or if you know people that might wanna come to that, we certainly be glad to have them come. Okay, so now I'm gonna start with the status of the bill. Okay, that's the Hermits Peak Fire Assistance Act Bill, which we've, we've all talked about this before and I suspect most all of you are relatively familiar with that. I'm gonna talk in more detail about it later, but as far as the status of the bill, it, it was passed out of the House of Representatives back in July. And it got passed out of the House as an addendum to the National Defense Authorization Act. That's the act that funds the military budget. Okay? So I got attached to that, it got passed, sent to the Senate. It's been sitting in the Senate through the summer break. The Senate is back in session and it is expected that this bill will be taken up during September. There is, as I understand it, I'm no political expert, but as I understand it, there's some level of pressure on the Senate to act on some of these funding bills because the, the funding for the government will run out at the end of this month. And so at a minimum, they're gonna have to do something to, they call it a continuing resolution to continue to fund the government. I've been in contact with Representative Ledger Fernandez's office. They're very good about calling me back. And I spoke with Matt Miller of that office today and he updated me, he said there's no real news on that yet, other than the fact that they are aware that Senator Luhon is working to get that bill passed this month. So hopefully we'll see something about that and if later on, if any of you have any questions, I'll open it up to questions and we can talk about that bill and we will talk about it a little bit more. Now, the other thing I'm, I wanna go ahead and update everybody on is this hazard debris removal program, which has, as those of you who've been in previous meetings with me know, this is a real frustration for me. Because it's, it's a good program that people need to participate in, but it's got some serious problems with it. Okay? And let me, let me, let me kinda give you the update and then I'll explain more about the bill and show you a few things. I mean, excuse me, the, the debris removal release and I'll show you a few things about it. First, you know, the, the history has been that release language is way too broad. The state of New Mexico has agreed with us on several occasions that it's way too broad, but they have refused to do anything to change that language in spite of our efforts to, if nothing else, pester them into doing so. We've also tried to, we've given them language that would fix it, which they did not accept. We even took it upon ourselves to take their own form, add a few words that everybody could see that would limit the scope of that release. They wouldn't accept that. So I was getting pretty pessimistic, but then there was a meeting, a public meeting in Mora on August 30th, which I attended. It was a public meeting put on by the various governmental entities that have all these various programs that most of you are seeing being offered, be it, you know, the, the reseeding and mulching programs, the hazard debris removal program, various other programs that are out there, some of the FEMA programs. In any event, all of these organizations were at that meeting to address the public and discuss these programs. So I attended. And then when they opened it up for questions, I got the mic and went down and I discussed our problems with the release language and the frustrating history we've had trying to get the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to fix the language that they admit is overbroad. We had a nice discussion there. Of course, nothing happened in that discussion. I did have the opportunity to bring home the problem, at least to the Forest Service representatives, the United States Forest Service representatives, and just ask them. Okay, the, the state of New Mexico has told us it's not their intent that participation in this program would waive their claims. How about you guys, Feds? Of course, the Forest Service, the, the top man there, he answered honestly and his answer was, "I'm sorry, but that's above my pay grade." Which of course it is. He said it would have to be taken up by legal department. He didn't even know who that was or anything else. So I don't know what will come of that. Now, at that meeting, it was also announced that, as many of y'all may recall, they had originally put deadlines on that program for about the end of August, I believe. And they announced at that meeting that the debris removal program would be extended indefinitely due to all the flooding. Okay? So there's that. Now, a few days later, I attended a Blue Haven Homeowners Association meeting in Lubbock. And the homeowners association, they had a meeting much like this one. I mean, part of it was live, but also they had attendees via Zoom. One of the attendees that they invited was Dr. Jeremy Klass. Dr. Klass is an official with the New Mexico State Forestry. Okay, now, Doctor, he was there to address the flooding issues there at Blue Haven as well as this program. And I didn't even, he didn't even know I was there, much less did I ask any questions, but he very quickly came around to the hazard debris removal program. And he said, by the way, he had been at that Mora meeting and he heard me speak at that meeting about this problem. So anyway, at Blue Haven, he told the Blue Haven group that he understood the problem with the release language in that hazard debris right-of-entry permit. And he said that they had had, they presumably being the state officials together with the federal officials, they had had a meeting to discuss that language and were working on an amendment to correct it and ease everyone's concerns that participating in the hazard debris removal program would not result in a claim that you have waived your right to seek recovery from the United States government. So I took that as another positive sign. Now, let me step off the hazard debris removal program for just a second to tell you what else Dr. Klass said at that meeting. It was, of course, the hope and the feeling of those homeowners that now that the monsoons were letting up, that they had seen the worst of it. Dr. Klass made it very clear to everyone that we have not, I repeat, not seen the worst of it. He said the worst is yet to come. And that everybody needs to be prepared that this is a long-term disaster with regard to the flooding and the loss of soil and the erosion. And he made it clear that these type of events can be expected for the next five to 10 years. Okay? So I wanted you all to know what Dr. Klass said on behalf of the state of New Mexico. Now, getting back to my saga, my journey concerning the release on the hazard debris removal program. After these meetings, I went to meet with Amanda Salas, who is the head of planning and zoning for San Miguel County. She's the person responsible for taking these right-of-entry permits and kind of administering the signup for the program. She agreed that the program had been extended indefinitely as a result of the flooding. Okay? So that's good news. However, then I went to see Rosalie Trujillo. She is the tax assessor in Mora County and has essentially the same role in this program as Miss Salas does at San Miguel County. That is, taking the applications and kind of administering, administering that end of it. She had a little bit different take on it. She said that the program had just been extended just for flooding problems, debris resulting from flooding. And she said it had not been extended indefinitely, rather it had just been extended into sometime in October. Okay? So we're getting different stories now. What I've been doing over the last two weeks is also trying to con, or not trying, contacting the, the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, who is in charge of the program, and trying to speak with the people in that department, the, the legal counsel in that department, who we have spoken to on numerous occasions before, that being, well, I just dropped his name from my memory.
Matthew Stackpole.
Stackpole, Matthew Stackpole. Thank you, Hannah. Matthew Stackpole as well as, as Amy Rye. And I've left numerous voicemails over and over and over again, and I have yet to receive a call back. So that department is avoiding me. So here we are, continuing to get the runaround. And let's do this, Hannah, would you pull up the language of that debris removal permit? And I'm gonna talk about it, just so you know, guys know what, what it is we're talking about. Here is the release and waiver of liability language in paragraph four that causes us lawyers concern. Because in spite of what the state of New Mexico says their intent is, the language says something different. And it says, first, it says, "Owner hereby acknowledges that the government is not liable for any claim based on the exercise or performance or failure to exercise or perform a discretionary function." And frankly, that's a true statement of law. But then, then it says, "And promises not to make such a claim." Now, if we end up having to file a tort claims act claim, we're gonna be claiming that they are liable because they're liable for conduct that was non-discretionary. Okay, so that, that language is a little problematic. The worst language, though, is the next one. Owner therefore waives any claims or legal action against the government. Okay, Hannah, show them the definition in that document of the government. Here we go. The county, whichever county, as well as the state of New Mexico and the United States government, including their officers, employees, agencies, and independent contractors, collectively the government. Okay, go back to the previous slide, Hannah. So we see now that this language applies to the government. Now, we know it's easy for them, this, it's an easy fix. We know it is. We've given them alternatives on how to fix it. The New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management lawyers have told us, "Well, yeah, we agree that our language is probably too broad. We just don't wanna change the language." Okay? Well, we know it's an easy fix because we see other releases associated with other programs that are being presented to all of you. And those releases are limited to the activities of whatever program. So for example, if they would narrow their release to just the activities of the hazard debris removal program, well, then we wouldn't have a problem. And we know they can do that because they did it in several places, in a different way, in several places in the same document. And here we have indemnification. Owner agrees to indemnify and hold harmless the government from any and all claims, damages, or losses arising out of the debris and hazardous tree removal program activities carried out pursuant to this ROE. Okay, so that language right there limits the indemnity to where we don't have a problem, but they're refusing to limit the overbroad release language. Okay, so I mean, so that's where we are. Here's, here's where we are. They're not budging. And so we got to talk with you about what are the risks associated with the hazard debris remote removal program? The risks, one risk is that if you participate in it, if you sign that right-of-entry permit, then you bear the risk that at a later time, when you bring a claim against the United States Forest Service, that the Forest Service will, what, will raise this paragraph four right here and say, "Excuse me, these people released us from any claim." Okay, that's the risk and that's what we've been trying to avoid. Now, there's risk on the other side, which the, the ladies at the counties as well as the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management are quick to point out, and that is, "Well, you don't have to participate in this program and you can sign our opt-out agreement, but if you do that, then you have to clean up the mess and you have to clean it up up to our government standards. And if you don't clean it up to our standards, we can penalize you for that. We can fine you. We can go out and send out contractors to clean it up and then send you the bill." Okay, and so they're hitting you on both sides, saying, "You better sign this release or we're gonna, we're gonna hit you with this potential liability." So that's the risk on the other side. Now, so, okay, she brought this up and thank you, Mr. Wayland, I see you there. You sent us this today. Here is an example of a letter that has recently gone out from, this one is from San Miguel County. Can you blow up that portion? Yeah, right in there? Are you able to, Hannah? Here we go. Okay, and so this is where they're talking about the extension. It includes flood debris, flood-related debris removal will be done on a case-by-case basis pursuant to the needs. Okay? Now, and then they're saying, you can see right below that, you can go sign the right-of-entry permit that we've been complaining about. Then they go out, then they go on and say, "If you choose not to participate in the full-service program, you need to instead opt out. And opt-out form is required. By opting out, property owners must agree to adhere to the specific cleanup standards and deadlines set forth by the state of New Mexico and/or San Miguel County." Okay, and then they warn about how much it can cost to clean up the debris, particularly according to their standards. So, and all those things are true and all those things are a risk. And so they're putting you in a bad spot, trying to make a decision on what to do. Some of you have already signed this thing and we know that. So while the risk exists, legally as a lawyer, I can read the release language and I know what it says and what it can be used for. And I've advised everybody of that, okay? It could be raised by the United States government as a, as a defense. However, I mean, this is not, this is not legal advice. I frankly kind of doubt that the Forest Service would try to do that. I kinda doubt it. They can, but I kinda doubt it. Again, that's not legal advice, but the language says they certainly can do it. Now, if they do, we, we believe, my law firm, we believe that we can overcome that defense in front of a court to say that this language was not intended to do that. We've got a lot of evidence about particularly what the state of New Mexico says. And so one thing we're gonna try now, and a recommendation we're gonna make to people who want to participate in this program, is we're gonna give you another document. I mean, I can tell you right now, the counties and the state of New Mexico are not going to accept a right-of-entry permit that has any change to their document. We already tried that. Okay, they won't accept it. Okay, so if, if you wanna participate in the program, you may wanna try this out. And that is a document, we're calling it a mutual understanding letter, which you may want to use and turn over to the counties along with your right-of-entry permit. Or if you've already given them a right-of-entry permit, then you may just want to deliver this to them so that they've got it. Now, they're free, what this does, and I won't go through it in detail, but it basically, what we're doing is just papering up what the state of New Mexico has been telling all of us for a couple of months now. We're referring to what Mr. Blackstock has told us, my first occasions, the press release that the state of New Mexico issued, as well as what Dr. Klass told the Blue Haven's homeowners association less than two weeks ago. We're, we're laying it all out in this document. And it basically says that, "Okay, state of New Mexico, we understand that you have told us that's what your intent is and we agree with your intent, state of New Mexico. And we just want you to know, we agree with your intent, that we are not releasing our claims against the United States government." Sign it, keep a copy of your signed copy, make a note on your copy of the, the date, time, and who you delivered that to and how you delivered it. If you stuck it in the mail, make a note of that. And keep that along with a copy of that right-of-entry permit. Now, you can get this document, we're gonna post it on our, our website, on the wildfire web, the wildfire page on our website. So you can download it and use it if you like. Now, I'm not promising anybody that it's gonna work. And I'm sure the state of New Mexico is gonna bow up and the, the ladies at the county office may say, "Well, we're not accepting this." And my attitude about it is, "Well, you can accept it or not accept it. We're turning it over to you." So here it is. If you throw it away, that's up to you and you're gonna have to answer for that. But I'm giving you a copy. And so we'll see what happens. Maybe it'll help, maybe it won't. But it's something. So, that's, let me stop now and is there anybody that has questions about the hazard debris removal program or anything I have just told you about? And you can either type it into the chat function or I suppose, Hannah, we can see if they hit the little hand raise and we can call on them?
Yeah, nobody's raised their hand yet.
Okay.
Hey Joe, this is Brian. Can I just clarify one thing on that letter?
Please do.
Okay, and so it's not-
By the way, let me introduce you, Brian. For those who don't know you, this is Brian Faribault. He's, he's my partner at our law firm, Level, Level, Eastern and Faribault. He's been helping with this case since the get-go. And he is, he's put a lot of work into this hazard debris removal program and the problem that arises because of this overbroad language. So go ahead, Brian, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to add that I think the letter in and of itself, you know, Joe said, you know, maybe they throw it away, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, you know, it's something. I think, I think it is more important than just what that relays in that message because the government is, when it enters into a contract or offers a contract with the public, it's bound by general concepts of contract law. And one of the bases of any contract is a mutual understanding of the parties. And so the, the letter itself states that while we think this language is unclear, and it appears government, you do as well, that you are agreeing that it means something different than maybe what it says and we mutually agree with you on that point. And so with that, that is outlining in the letter one of the fundamental elements of a formed contract. And if they throw it out or disregard it, then they are agreeing that there is no mutual assent. And by doing so, they negate the contract itself. And so if you just send the letter and they perform, but then try to back away from it, they are either in agreement with you or they negate the contract. And so I think, just at a fundamental point on contract law, if they try to get around the letter, then they negate the release, which is very critical for you as a victim of the government's acts here and their overbroad release language, because you don't wanna be caught in that, that catch-22 of, "Oh, I've sent in the, the right-of-entry and now I may be waiving my claim to damages." Here, you can do both. You can send it in and protect yourself from waiver because if they don't acknowledge the mutual assent, then you have already formed the foundation of saying, "Then we don't agree." And that's very critical so that they can't then say, "Because you signed that agreement," that, or that right-of-entry, that contract, that you have in fact waived some claim. If, and I agree with Joe, I doubt they would go that route, but they would have the opportunity to and because of it, you have to protect against it.
And Mr. Berlin has his hand up.
Yes, sir.
You'll need to unmute so we can hear you.
Okay, two things. One, in regard to what Brian just said, I, I don't think I agree with all that. I practiced law for quite a number of years myself. And if they don't sign that understanding, then they've not agreed to it. And the fact that they discarded or whatever they do with it, if they haven't signed it, then they haven't made any, we had, we have no agreement with them about it. So I think that's very disputable, your, your interpretation of that. But the other, my other question or is, okay, so I have a stream right on my property that's flooded, has flash, has, has had flash floods, I don't know, at least a half a dozen times. And so I've got a lot of debris and I can't wait for who knows how long before the, the- And I can't wait for who knows how long before the, the county comes along. And does this, uh, removal program. So I've already got somebody helping me to remove it, and I'm paying them. And is there anything in this program that's gonna allow me to get reimbursed?
Not in the program itself. Uh, however, that is a, the, the expenses for that are something you would be able to recover through your claim. Okay, whether that's gonna be a tort claim, or whether the bill gets passed and it's a claim under the bill, those are expenses you'll be able to recover. Or at least try to recover, obviously. And a- as you said. Uh, we deal in the world of law where everything is subject to dispute. So, uh, you know, and you may be right about how ultimately a court would rule on the effect of that letter. But, uh, you know, we're faced with a situation where, uh, they're not doing anything. And so it doesn't hurt to try. And that, that's kinda my attitude about it, and we at least have the argument that by going ahead and performing in the face of that. Then they are assenting that way. Now, of course, and then as you said, there's a whole world of arguments to say, well, you know, the government didn't assent. Because the government has to sign it to assent, that kinda thing. You're right. I, that, there's a, there's a lot of room to, to dispute all of that.
Yeah.
But it's, the way we view it is, it's a new offer, and if they perform, that's acceptance of the new offer. And so whether they think they're agreeing to it or not, if they move forward under the new offer. That is evidence of acceptance and agreement. And you don't have to have their signature because you have their stamp on the ground where they did the work.
Okay. Any other questions about the hazard debris removal program?
Uh, yeah, Joe?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, okay. Good afternoon. Uh, yes, my name is Viola Martinez, and I have property in Chacon. In Mora County. And, um, I recently sent Caitlin an email. Uh, regarding, uh, the, a process that, uh, the county assessor. Rosalie Trujillo in Mora County initiated. And, and I was just gonna try to reach for the letter, but it's, uh, you, you don't, I think you'll know what letter I'm talking about. She sent out a letter, uh, supposedly to all the applicants who had filed. And signed that ROE form, and I'm one of those, all right? I initially did that, uh, because of rumors that were spreading in Mora County, fast and furious. Oh, if you don't sign this, uh, nobody's gonna help you, blah, 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 holding us hostage, okay? But, uh, my question is, a letter was mailed out or sent. Subsequent to the ROE by Rosalie Trujillo, uh, as county, uh, assessor. And in the letter, um, there's verbiage, but the bottom line is, uh, if, if. Um, the letter was telling the, the property owner. Who had previously signed an ROE form, that if you decide to opt out. Now's the time, because there was a deadline, October something, I mean, I'm sorry, August. August something was the deadline, okay? Well, I never received that letter. I never knew about that letter. I, I have no knowledge of such a letter going out, and I've gone to check all my emails. Because several relatives up in Chacon area asked me if I had received this letter from Rosalie Trujillo. And I didn't even know what letter they were talking about, and I, and, and they said something to the effect, oh, Viola, if you. If you don't opt out and, and you don't fill out that, that form, you don't sign it. Uh, then it means you can't sue the government. And I say, I never received such a letter. Um, uh, was it mailed out? Was it emailed? Was it text? I've gone through all my, um, methods of communication, and I never received that letter. Will that make a difference? And that can be proven, because hard drives don't lie, computers don't lie. Text messages, I have an Apple, uh, phone, and I never received such a letter from Rosalie. Giving me the opportunity to opt out.
Okay, well, uh, of course, I don't know what exact letter you're talking about. I've seen several letters. Uh, and there were letters, uh, that came out after, frankly, it was after we started complaining about the release language. Because then people were going to the counties and saying, wait a minute, uh, why should I sign this? Because I don't wanna release the government, or I already signed it, and I don't wanna release the government. So then they started sending out notifications about the opt-out procedure. That if you did not want to participate in the program, you had to sign the opt-out. And, uh, we saw that referred to in the letter from Ms. Solis that, uh, Jim Whalen just sent us. But, um. I think that's probably what it is, what they're referring to.
Joe, if you don't mind, I, I don't mean to take up all this room, but, uh, 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 to, just to listen to me, uh, my issue. But, uh, my, this letter came, the first, the very first time I had laid eyes on this letter. Was when you, uh, sent out, uh, a letter dated Au- August fifteenth. And it's a copy of a letter to the governor, uh, our governor and Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez. Dated, uh, August fifteenth. And attached to your letter is the copy that I'm referring to. It's, uh, Rosalie Trujillo's office with her signature on this letter dated August first. And she writes in bold, second final notice, response required. I never received the first one, I never received the second one, and if there were any subsequent other letters that have been mailed out. I've never gotten any of them.
Now, uh, Ms. Martinez, you did go ahead and sign the right of entry permit, right?
Yes, I did, initial. Yes, and I, I mailed you a copy. I, I've mailed all my documents today, so you should get them in the mail.
Okay, uh, so, I mean, what, what that means is, uh, you're probably already enrolled in the program. And, and so you should go ahead and get whatever benefits there are of the program, unless you choose to opt out. Now, I would have to go dig that up again to look at it. I've seen too many of these, uh, in the meantime, but I do know what you're talking about. Uh, referring to the opt-out program and various deadlines. Now, they've had various deadlines on a lot of this, and like I was saying a minute ago. At these meetings I've gone to and subsequent to the meetings, they've explained to me that the deadlines have been extended. Uh, although Ms. Trujillo, her take on it was that it's a much more limited extension. Than some, what some of the other people were telling me, that it was a broad-based extension. So, uh, unfortunately, we're getting mixed signals on this program from the various jurisdictions. And I wish I could make that better and make that not happen, but that's just what's happening. And I think Mr. Lee had a question, am I right?
Yes, Joe, hi, this is Jim Lee.
Yes, sir.
I had, yeah, I had a follow-up question on the debris removal. I, uh, my homeowner's insurance did cover debris removal for the home which was destroyed. Has nothing to do with the lots that, that I own in addition to that. But I would, I had retained before I got the letter, uh, for the free debris removal program. Um, platinum debris removal out of Albuquerque and Las Vegas. Retained them to do it, it was covered by homeowner's insurance. Is there anything I should do? Uh, my assumption was I shouldn't be trying to recover, uh, government funds for something that insurance paid for. But I thought I would take the opportunity to, uh, to, to get, get advantage of your experience and recommendation.
Yeah, but what, what we need to do is we need to treat it. Uh, like evidence, any other evidence, we need to go ahead and gather it up and, and have it and include it. Now, what that's gonna be is, um, while there is a claim to recover those kinds of expenses. Um, the, the claim is now gonna belong to the insurance company under its right to sub- subrogate, okay? And how that gets treated, uh, is a little different depending on whether it's a tort claims act. Or under this bill, if the bill passes. But the net effect is the same, and that is that for those expenses of doing that. Uh, hazardous debris removal, uh, the, the insurance company. Would be the one ultimately with the claim to recover what they paid for.
Okay, so there's really no action I need to take on this.
Other, other than gathering and preserving and delivering to us evidence of what was done. And how much it cost. Uh, no, and then, y- you know, we'll, that'll go all into the hopper and, uh, it'll sort out. Later, depending upon which way, which kind of claim we end up bringing, and how that is treated. Under the bill, uh, which I'll talk about here in a little bit more, but under the bill. Anything that the insurance company pays to you. Uh, through the claims administration process, it is deducted. From whatever your total proved-up damages are. And then that becomes a claim not for you to collect for the insurance company. But it becomes a, a claim that the insurance company is gonna have to collect. And under the bill, the insurance company is a second-class citizen. Uh, and so they don't get to recover anything until you've recovered your damages.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions about the debris removal program? Okay, in that event, what I'm gonna do is kinda walk through, um, the kinds of claims there are. This is the stuff that some of you may have already heard before. Um, but for those who haven't, I'll walk through the, the legal landscape. Of where everybody's at right now with regard to the claims, uh, our viewpoint on those claims. And, and what we think people should do, and how we intend to conduct. Uh, claims recovery depending on what happens. So, let me see, I'll share the screen, and I've got a PowerPoint, but I'll kinda zip through it pretty quickly. Uh, cause a lot of it, you folks are already aware of. Is it up, Hannah?
Yes, and do you want to announce our special guest, John Brown, who's here?
Oh, yes, yes. Um, yeah, let's go ahead and do that now. Uh, let, let's take that down. And let John Brown speak. Many of you know John now, you've met him. Uh, many of you know of John Brown, you've heard us talk about him. Some of you may not have heard us talk about him or not have met him, but Dr. Brown is an arborist. Uh, he's a PhD, I'm gonna make him, uh, not be modest and to describe his qualifications. We've engaged Dr. Brown to, uh, help all of us put together the evidence. That we will end up submitting, whether to a court or a claims administrator. Concerning, uh, the damage that the fire and the resulting floods have done to your property. And to evaluate not only exactly what that damage has been, but also what it would cost. To repair, replace, or remediate. Now, I'll talk about damages in a little bit, but that's what John is doing. We've got him out here working right now. He, uh, is living right down the street from me here in, uh, Rosiata, near the Pandere Front Gate. And he's just here working until it all gets done. Uh, and so he's, he's done a lot of work already, and as people sign us up, that's one of the first things we do. Is get John out there to tie down the evidence and evaluate. The damages and the cost of repair, remediation, receipting, et cetera. He will eventually have preliminary reports prepared, which we will then cover with each of our clients. Uh, to kinda refine those down, and then that will give us, um, that will give us the. The evidence that we will be using to either file a claim. In the Hermits Peak Assistance Act Claims Process, if that comes to pass. Or to file a notice of claim, which is required before we can file. A, uh, federal tort claims act claim. In any event, that's Dr. Brown, he's a good dude, and, uh, all of you will like him, and he does a good job. And so Dr. Brown, with that introduction, would you please tell about yourself, what you do, what you've been up against? Uh, what you've been finding, and things that folks need to be looking out for, and taking pictures of, or mental notes of, et cetera.
Hi, everyone. I'm John Brown. And, um, a little over an hour ago, I was up at forty-one Skyline. And then I'm gonna, I will introduce myself, Joe, just, but, um. I was up there and it started to rain a little bit, you know, and, um. And I had to protect my stuff, my notes, and my cameras and stuff, and. That house was totally destroyed, and I documented the damage to the house. And then the trees around the house. Um, I measured the trees. With this little device. It's a Nikon Forestry Pro II. So I take the measurements and photograph. And I fly my drone afterwards. And on this particular house, um. I'd been working all day, there was a lot of different properties involved. And on, on the house, I flew my drone, and my drone is looking down at the damage. And then it goes over, and I look over the valley, the Pandere Valley. It was so beautiful. I can only imagine the exquisite beauty that that person experienced being at that house. And then I saw these big thunder clouds coming in, and I thought, I gotta get out of here and get to this meeting. So, that's what I've been doing all day. I started at about five thirty this morning. I'm Dr. John Brown. I got my undergraduate degree at East Texas State University in Commerce, Texas. From there, I went to Texas A&amp;M University and got a master's degree. From there, I went to North Carolina State, and I worked on a PhD there. But for some reason, I decided to work on two PhDs, one there and one at Duke. And, um, I received my PhD from North Carolina State, and Duke said. Well, we'll hire you and double your salary if you drop out of the PhD program and post-doc. And so I post-doced at Duke University for three years. I have had a lot of experience, a lot of education. I started my company in July of nineteen ninety-three. That's twenty-nine years of being out in the field and conducting studies. Today, uh, we were discussing a, an- another fire issue. And we were talking about the root systems of the trees and doing transects with a backhoe. So I could study the prosoil profile and the root system, and. I've done hundreds of those, but it, after all, I mean, it's been fifteen years since I did those. But it was just a reminder of some of the things that I do do. Here, uh, at Hermits Peak. I, and I like the lady of Viola, she pronounced Chacon. Like, I always get that chalk on or whatever, you know, cause I was just up there yesterday on Leon Lane. And, uh. I'm go, you know, I, so I'm all the ways up north, I'm all the ways down, we were talking about, um, the Blue Haven and other areas down there. I'm at one end of, I, oh. Day before yesterday, I was up past Moore where the highway turns like this and goes around. It's up past one twenty-one, and I sat there and I took pictures from the road. Holy cow, all the ways to Hermits Peak I could see. And if you think about the expanse of this fire, it's pretty big, and there's all kinds of different damages. So the trees, um. I go on your property, and for the most part, I walk and. You, you know, yesterday. You, you know, yesterday, the slope was forty-five degrees and I met. Uh, a lady up there, she's been working on the fires and her name's April and. She, I had my walking sticks and my fanny pack and she said, I need to get some of those sticks. But on her feet, she had like a little chain with spikes on it called crampons. And I said, I need to get those crampons to go up these forty-five degree slopes. So I, uh, I meet a lot of people, I meet a lot of, of people out there doing these cleanups, doing the debris removal. And we get to know each other and we're like a family, we're all trying to help. Um, I know the, I'm not a lawyer, of course, so the legal jargon, um. I don't follow sometimes, but we're all trying to help you. On the flood issues, there's devastation from the flood. Uh, two days ago, I was up at uh, Moore, at the main, Main Street Grill or whatever it's called there. And uh, I met a client, his house washed away in the flood, he lost everything, it's gone. Completely, he showed me pictures and it was so sad, you know, his family, his children, his grandchildren. They depended on this land and now. So I can, I can understand the grief that many of you are suffering. Bear with me, I'm getting one property at a time and. I'm excited to meet each and every one of you if you happen to be there, otherwise. I'll get your properties done, you may not know that. Um, but I get on those properties, I, and I just get one property after the next. So. I hope that answers some of your questions, when I'm done. I make a report of the number of trees that were damaged. Also, your fencing, today there was five strand fencing with T-posts. Man, that fence, it looked like it had just been put up recently, but when the fire hits the barbed wire. It takes off the coating and the fence rapidly deteriorates and becomes brittle. So that fencing has to be replaced and I make an account of that. Um, so, let's say you have wooden fencing, I take that into consideration or patios. Some people have these beautiful stone patios all laid out in the fire. As well as the people cleaning up. Um, have destroyed these beautiful stone patios. And waterfalls, little water fountains that people make out of stone. Yesterday I saw a trampoline, I put that trampoline down, it was destroyed. So I get like, if you have decks or you have hot tubs. You know, I investigate that and I put it all into this computer program that I designed back in twenty seventeen. I've done the fires in California, the campfire, Santa Rosa, Slater Fire, Zog Fire. Spent five months in the Mojave Desert last year on a Bobcat Fire. Measuring Joshua trees. So I have the experience, I'm dedicated, I just get out there and keep. One, just doing the properties and I promise I'll get to yours. And if you have questions, um, I can, I answer them. And uh, did I cover everything Joe?
Yeah, I think so, um, it, one thing that I would mention is that as part of his process, he does also use comparison. Uh, pre-fire satellite imagery, uh, to help identify things that were there. Uh, and so he makes use of all the, the, the imagery that's available and the technology. To uh, quickly pull together what you had before and what you're left with now. Uh, so that he can make a good evaluation of what repair remediation, receding, et cetera. Would actually cause, so. Uh, does anybody have any quick question? Yes, sir, Mr. Berlin.
So, um, this sounds like a very expensive process, um, Dr. Brown. Um, who pays Dr. Brown? Um, of, the, upfront or do, do you wait until the, the settlement comes next year or whenever? And then you get paid and is the, so, is your fee on top of what we get or does it comes out of? Our, uh, our, um, part of the settlement?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Oh, you wanted to, okay, Joe.
Yeah, sure, um, the, the attorneys pay the expenses. We advance the expenses on a contingent basis, meaning if we don't recover anything for you. We don't get back our expenses, you don't have to pay us our expenses. Uh, we get expenses back out of the recovery, okay? And so we gotta pay Dr. Brown, uh, and he sends us a bill and that's not contingent. Uh, he puts on his work and um, and sends us a bill for it, so. Now that, that ends up working its way through the process and I'll touch on this quickly, but then I'll get into it in a little more detail in a minute, in a few minutes. And that is that, um. The, the attorneys, if you engage us, we work on a contingent fee, meaning what us, what we attorneys earn. Is a percentage of the recovery, in this case, it's going to be twenty-five percent because of the federal statutes involved. So twenty-five percent contingent fee, meaning you don't pay the lawyers unless we get a recovery and then we get our recovery as. Uh, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of whatever we get on the recovery, okay? Then in addition, the lawyers are entitled to recover back our expenses that we had to incur. Uh, prosecuting the claims and proving up the damages, okay? Now, how much will that be? Well, I can't tell you because we don't know, uh, it's, uh, it's kind of like war. You don't know exactly how much war is going to cost because once the first bullet's fired, then you don't know what's coming back. So we'll have to wait and see, but we are, uh, we lawyers are very cognizant. Of those expenses because we're the guys paying and we don't know that we're going to get them back. And so we try to be very careful about what we spend and how much we spend. My guess, our goal, our budget is going to be to hold overall expenses for any given client. To between five to seven percent of the recovery. Uh, but again, it'll all, uh, it'll all depend on what happens and an example will be if, and I'll get into this more in detail later, but if the. If the bill passes, uh, then we won't have the sovereign immunity discretionary function fight. And we won't have to engage in the fight over liability. So what that will do is dramatically reduce the amount of expenses that are incurred in the fight. Now, uh, Dr. Brown and then whatever else we have to do for any given client to develop their damages. Uh, that will, that will be a function of what each, each person's damages are, so, you know, some people. Uh, Dr. Brown's uh, work is going to be, you know, it's not, not much there. And he can, he can knock it out in no time and it won't cost that much. Some people have thousands of acres and so there's going to be a lot of work involved in those, but. You're on the damages expenses, you will only be uh, responsible for what is incurred on your recovery. On the common expenses and there'll be some of those, in particular, if we have a liability fight, there could be a lot of those. Then those will get spread out on a proportional basis among all the many clients. So tha- that's kind of a short explanation of how the expenses work.
Can I make a comment, Joe?
Yeah, please.
Uh, Bruce, um, I'm getting close to doing your property and I know you have a small parcel and I can understand your concern. Um. About me visiting and evaluating your trees. I would say that your parcel will take about thirty minutes and then I fly my drone. Um, and then I have to generate a report, so I think at most you'll have like an hour or two. And that'd be about three to four hundred dollars for everything, then. The, uh, an eighteen foot tree that's damaged is worth two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. So if you think about it, I do, i- it's like about ten percent of one tree. Um, but some of your trees may be sixty foot tall and they'll be worth over ten thousand. So for those that have small parcels, I get them done fast, very efficient. And I treat your parcels the same as I'd treat a four thousand acre parcel, you know, I put the same care into that. So I, I hope that. Better, you, you have a better understanding of what I do.
So, uh, we're, um, if, if the legislation goes through, if the bill passes. Then uh, we're still going to have to submit, um, a list of damages and, and including Dr. Brown's, um. Fees and whatnot and, and you'll, and uh, the law firm will still get twenty-five percent of that?
Of the recovery, yes, sir.
Whether, whether you file a suit or whether the bill goes through and, and you don't have to file suit.
Right, we're going to have to, we're going to have to prepare the claims regardless. Um, and it's going to be a fight regardless, it will just be less of a fight. If it's under the bill, because we're not going to have to fight the extremely difficult and risky. Uh, discretionary function battle and sovereign immunity. So, um, yeah, that'll make a difference, but in, in one place that. Where it will really make a big difference for all of you, if it passes under the language it's currently got, is it will, um. It should dramatically reduce expenses, uh, so that, that puts more money in your pocket, it should also speed things up too. Uh, so, anyway, that, that's the way that should work if it passed, if the bill passes with the language it currently has. Okay, so I'm going to quickly go through, um, kind of my presentation about the claims and our approach and that kind of thing. I'll do it fast, uh, but I think we need to talk a little bit about this so you know what we're going to be doing. And why? So, uh, let me, or is Hannah, is my program up?
Yes.
Okay, so. Uh, we all know why we're here, um, we've all seen all this kind of stuff, we know what happened. We know how big it was, uh, there are actually two fires, Hermits Peak and Calf Canyon. If the bill passes, that distinction will not make any difference. If the bill does not pass, there will be a fight over that issue because. Um, that, that could make a big difference to how much the government ends up owing. And they have a lot better defense on Calf Canyon fires. Than they, than we think they do anyway on Hermits Peak and I'll discuss why that is in a minute. Uh, we know the size, everything else, you guys are painfully aware of all of that. Uh, that both were caused by or started by the US Forest Service, both as prescribed burns. Uh, they did these prescribed burns during severe drought, um, also, um. During a Lenina and I tell you what, Brian, if you're out there, I'll just kind of let you pick up on this because. What Brian is going to talk about a little bit or, or some of the details about what the Forest Service. Did or did not do and how that could, uh, could drive a claim and, and actually Brian, hang on just a second. Let me, let me cover something first and then I'll come back to this, so I can put it in context. Um. And that is the nature of the claims, I'm going to let Brian come back to this stuff right here. And here. Okay, I'm going to talk about three options for claims because that puts what Brian's going to talk about in context. Um. There's, one is, uh, what we call an FTCA lawsuit, that's a tort claims act. All right, and that's, that's more like a regular lawsuit, if somebody runs a stop sign and T-bones you in an intersection. You have a tort claim against that person for all the harm resulting from that person's conduct, uh, leading to the wreck. Okay, that unfortunately, here, the person who ran the stop sign is the United States government. And there is a big bad concept called sovereign immunity. Which literally means the king can do no wrong and it's been around as long as there's been kings and it's come up to us. Uh, through the law, our sovereign is the government, in this case, the United States government. And sovereign immunity just says you can't sue the king, you can't sue the co- sovereign, unless and only to the extent that the sovereign says you can't. And so that's what the FTCA is, is the Federal Tort Claims Act, so there is a potential for a federal tort claims act. Case, however, there's big problems, um. Michael Watts, who I'll talk about in a minute, he likes to talk about how sovereign immunity is to a tort claim. As uh, water is to a fire. And it does have that effect, it is a big, 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 serious hurdle to overcome. Okay, and now the, the courts, particularly since the Cerro Grande fire back in two thousand. Up at Los Alamos, uh, there've been numerous cases brought arising out of prescribed burns. And we've looked at all of those and they're, they, wh- wh- all but one have been poured out of court. On the grounds of yet another problem with the tort claims act. Claim, and that is even if you get past the sovereign immunity and fit within the tort claims act. There's a concept called the discretionary function exemption. Which says essentially that the judicial branch will not second guess the legislative branch and the executive branch. Uh, in their authority to create and execute policy of the government. And to uh, exercise the discretion that inherently goes along with. Uh, that creation of policy and execution of policy. And so if the, the claim that you have arises out of a discretionary. Function or discretionary decision by a governmental agency or employee. Then the courts say, you don't have claim discretionary function. Okay, so all of these prescribed burn opinions out there with one exception. All of them have been poured out of court on discretionary function. Uh, typically, the claims will say something like, you know. Uh, the government in fighting the fire, they started a backburn that they should have never started in the backburn, got out of control and burned my house or. Uh, they should have put a, a fire line in a different place or things like that, they should have used more firemen. Uh, at the time they started the fire, that's an allocation of resources, they should have used certain equipment, all of these kinds of claims. The courts have held, those are just inherently discretionary and so they dismiss the cases. The one exception is a case out of Florida. Uh, where the allegation was that the mistake the government made. Was in starting the fire to begin with, in dropping the match and in, in, they did it. In violation of their own burn plan. Burn plans are required, Brian's going to talk about that in a minute, burn plans are now required, they're very detailed, they're very strict. And they, what that court said was, is that the burn plan removed the government's discretion. The government has to follow the burn plan, okay, so. Uh, my firm early on, uh, decided, um, frankly, before any of the others out there had, did. We decided that we think even though we didn't have all the evidence at the time. We think that there's probably going to be a violation of the burn plan. What we've received since then, uh, helps confirm that conviction on our part, Brian will talk about that. In, in any, in any case, that's a federal tort claim. In in any, in any case, that's a federal tort claims act case. And problems associated with it, with the immunity, sovereign immunity defense. Um, okay, there could be an administrative claim and that's gonna be. What we will have in the event that the Hermit's Peak. Uh, Fire Assistance Act passes. I'll talk about that in a little more detail in just a minute. Um, well, okay, he's already kinda put it together here. Uh, and as I think everybody knows, there has been a bill filed. I touched on that at the beginning of the meeting. We're waiting to see if it does pass. Um. This is some of the politics of it. Uh, that's the first page of the bill when it was originally filed. Now, it did get passed. It changed a little bit. But mostly in the form, it changed when it got attached as an addendum to the National Defense Administration Act. In any event, it's very broad. Its language is very broad and very helpful, not only in terms of. Who can bring a claim, just any individual, tribes, corporations, partnerships, and just any entity, governmental entities. Uh, just anybody, anybody or anything that suffered a claim as a result of that fire. Now, they call it the Hermit's Peak Fire. By the way, that bill defines the Hermit's Peak Fire to include the Calf Canyon Fire too. Uh, it allows just a completely broad range of damages. So just about anything that. Uh, state law would allow as a recovery for any kind of tort. Uh, is allowed to be recovered under the bill. The only kinds of damages the bill takes away. Are punitive damages, or some people call them exemplary damage. They're just designed to punish somebody. So you won't get punitives, and they take away prejudgment interest on your claim. Otherwise, uh, just about anything you could prove up is falls within a recoverable. A recoverable type of damage. Uh, these are some of the ones, you know, loss and value of the property. You're gonna have, I know a bunch of you have. Had insurance, thank goodness, but you also learned that it didn't matter how much insurance you had, it wasn't enough. Um, so you're gonna have property loss over and above what you've got in insurance, even if you had really, really good insurance. Uh, but business, business losses, personal injury, fortunately, there hadn't been too much of that in this fire, but there has been some and even some deaths. As you know. Um, okay, so under the bill. Um, if insurance, well, the best way for me to do it is an example. Let's say uh, you had a structure that burned up and your damages are a hundred thousand dollars. And you had insurance that paid you fifty thousand dollars. Okay? The, if you file a claim under the bill, you're going to put on all your evidence of the hundred thousand dollars in damages. But you're also going to uh, disclose that you recovered fifty thousand dollars from the insurance company. And then if the claims administrator that's created by the act agrees with you. Then they will say, okay, you're entitled to one hundred thousand dollars less fifty thousand dollars. That you already got from your insurance company, and so here's fifty thousand dollars. Okay, that's essentially the way it will work. The insurance company still has its claim for the fifty thousand dollars it paid. But it's gonna be up to the insurance company to go collect that from the administrator. And insurance companies are are treated as second-class citizens because they uh, they got paid for taking on that risk. And so they come in second after actual property owners. Okay, so. Uh, there we've talked about the bill. And then the third area, well, this, this says uh, civil litigation, and actually, there is a. What I consider the third area, and that, and and some of you have heard about this because I know some of you are. Um, you're Pandaree homeowners. And the Pandaree Homeowners Association is taking a different approach, which we have looked at, but we disagree with. And that is a, an approach of filing a, what's called a takings claim. In other words, you say that the government for some public purpose. Uh, effectively took your property for a public purpose. And therefore, under the constitution, the government cannot take private property without paying just compensation. So that's called a takings claim. There's a special court up in Washington DC to handle those claims. Uh, I'll tell you that uh, uh, one of my clients and my friend, and he's married to my cousin. Mike Gregory, who many of you know, uh, at Pandaree uh, RV Resort. Uh, Mike called me, uh, he called me about this fire before it ever got here. Uh, within a few days after that fire was declared a wildfire and you all were watching the pillar of smoke off to your south. Uh, he called me about this, uh, wondering what people's rights might be if they end up getting harmed. My initial reaction was it was a takings claim. However, uh, we did the legal research and there is a case out there, an opinion. Out of this very court up in DC, the Federal Court of Claims. Uh, for a prescribed burn out of control, okay, like this. And that happened up, that case happened up in Wyoming, a hunting outfitter who had his various hunting camps set up. Uh, and they all got burned up in this prescribed burn out of control. So he filed a takings claim with Federal Court of Claims. Federal Court of Claims issued an opinion that says, nope. That is not a takings claim. That sounds in tort. Which means, okay, you're gonna have to go over to uh, US District Court and file a Federal Port Claims Act. You're gonna have to overcome sovereign immunity, discretionary function, all that kinda stuff. So. We don't believe there's gonna be a viable takings claim. We may be, we may be wrong and we're, if somebody wants to show us how we get around that case. Uh, we're all ears, but as it stands right now, we don't think so. Now, one thing about the bill. That I haven't talked about that I need to talk about in connection with these three basic options is that bill says. You've got three different ways of bringing a claim. You can bring a claim under the Federal Port Claims Act. You can bring a takings claim or under any other civil action. Or you can bring a claim under this bill. Okay? But. If you bring or uh, bring it or file a claim. Under any of those methods, you, the bill says you have elected your remedy. And uh, what that means, I know we got a few lawyers out there that knows what that means, but. Uh, for everybody else, what that means is the bill says you've got a choice to make at the outset. And once you make that choice, you can never go back. Okay? And so, for example, if you decide, well, I'm gonna file a takings claim, and then we'll see what happens with the bill. Well, if the bill passes, under the terms of that new law, you already elected your remedy. And so if the Court of Claims then says, no, it's not a takings. Uh, you're gonna have to either file it under the bill or a federal tort claim. It's too late. You've already elected your remedy and that election is irrevocable under the bill. So that's why we're telling everybody. Uh, whoa, don't you be, w- we're not allowing any of our clients. To file or bring a claim until we know what's gonna happen with that bill. Because we don't want anybody getting stuck under election remedies if the bill passes. Okay? Uh, now, if the bill doesn't pass, you've got two alternatives, and there you got a little more flexibility. Uh, as long as uh, one gets dismissed. Be- before the statute limitations runs, you're still able to go over and file the other. But if the bill passes, election remedies will get you. So. Um, and uh, this is what I just talked about. Actually, I forgot I had a slide about it, but. That's the election of remedies provision with these three. Uh, and. And I bet you it says uh. Yeah, binding effect and election by an injured person to settle a claim. Well, no, that's a different one. That's, I'll talk about that in a minute. Well, um. That's a, that's a different provision under the bill. If you, if the bill passes and you elect to pursue your claim under the bill. Then the first step is that you prepare all your evidence. And you file your claim and all your evidence with a claims administrator. Who then essentially acts like a judge and determines if. Uh, they agree based on the evidence with what we say your claim is. And if they do, then they, then the claims administrator issues a decision. If you like the decision. You can uh, you can accept it, and then you'll get a check. If you don't like the decision, you got two alternatives to us effectively appeal. One of them is called an actual, it's a appeal. To the judiciary. Uh, but it's, it's done under substantial evidence. I won't get into what that means. What it basically means is. The odds of you ever prevailing on that kind of appeal are next to none. So that's not really a very good alternative. The other alternative is if you disagree with the claims administrator, you can then. Uh, go into binding arbitration, which is more like a lawsuit. Uh, where you have an arbitrator who acts like a judge and then each side fights about what the evidence is. And then whatever that arbitrator decides, you're stuck with it. Okay, so that is the, the bill and the causes of action. Now, I want Brian, then I'm gonna back up here. Brian, you go ahead and start talking about uh, where we're at with respect to what happened. And how that fits into these claims and defenses that I've just talked about.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Again, I'm Brian Faribault. I'm a partner of Joe Levels at the Level Firm. What, and well, he's going back to essentially where we're at with. Regard to the discretionary function issue. Let's say there is no compensation fund passed. And we're having to fight through what is. The liability of the United States government for the Hermit's Peak Calf Canyon Fire. And this goes back to really this burn plan and how that comes in is. This, this is not the first time that wildfire has gotten out of control and especially not in New Mexico. Uh, there's a Cerros Grande fire back in the early two thousands. That burned around Los Alamos and caused a lot of damage then, and that was a prescribed burn, got out of control. And the government went through the process of saying, okay, what do we do to make sure this doesn't happen again? And the result of that was you have to have a burn plan that you follow to a T. So that everybody knows what actions are to be taken in regard to the burn. And so now we fast forward. To twenty twenty-two. And maybe a little bit before that, but where we are now is there's a burn plan in place. Uh, that came into existence in two thousand nineteen and was approved for this prescribed burn. And that all happened before a series of delays. Cause the prescribed burn did not go forward when intended. Those delays were the result of the. Pandemic. They were the result of Mexican spotted owl regulations and protection of nesting grounds. That was being advocated and and fought. And government shutdown. And so. They didn't get to do the prescribed burn. They had a plan that was in place. It said, this is how we're gonna do it, and that was developed in two thousand nineteen. And that just got pushed forward year after year until we get to the current timeframe uh, twenty twenty-two. And let me see, Joe, I don't know that I have control of that.
You don't. I've I've got control of it. Just tell me what you need.
Okay, well, that's okay. And so where we're at right now here at the Lenina. Slide is that we have a Lenina cycle that's been in place. Is it actually the third year? Uh, what we're going into now of a Lenina cycle, there was a slight break this summer. That helped those monsoons that then caused a lot of the flooding damage that you're experiencing. But before that, it was, it was drought, dry conditions and high heat, and the year before that, it was the same. And what we've come to determine just from doing our own research is that every major wildfire. In New Mexico's uh, recorded history has occurred. At least for the time period where El Nino and Lenina have been measured during a Lenina year, including Cerros Grande's. And several other fires in the immediate vicinity of Hermit's Peak that occurred. Earlier, including, I believe, in two thousand nineteen, or it might have been the two thousand eighteen, but. We know that Lenina time periods are dry, hot. Time periods, and so those aren't conducive to controlled burn activity. But, and we have the government delaying even during the twenty twenty-two timeframe, early twenty twenty-two. Delaying their actions because of the drought conditions. So, next slide. Most of these burns are conducted by the Forest Service between September and May. And so because of the drought conditions at the beginning of this year, you had a situation where at the end of March. Going into the last month of the burn window, the government had to make decisions, and they made the decision and they reported on this. That they were gonna try to force this burn through. They didn't use those words, but that's the effect, because they were under intense pressure to catch up on the delayed burns. That had been delayed over the course of the last few years. So, next slide. Yeah. We call it a blind rush because, again, they, they have a closing window, they're under pressure, and so they start to just move. And we don't know that they were making the best decisions. We know from their report that they issued in June. That the Forest Service issued in June as their review of what happened and what went wrong. That they made decisions based on old outdated equipment when better equipment was less convenient, but still available. They made decisions based on the pressure to just move forward. We know that the decision here was made on April fifth. They made a decision to start the fire on April sixth based on this closing window. Because that was the time that they had the best weather conditions. April fifth happened to be a red flag day. So not a day that you'd start a fire, but it was a day they decided we were gonna go the next day. So they jumped out and what we see from this burn plan. Uh, they, they give a lot of information in the burn plan about. What went wrong, a lot of which is geared towards discretionary function. And we view the burn or the review as a document to protect the government. By saying these were all discretionary acts. We picked bad equipment. We had better equipment, but that was a discretion. That was a choice and uh, we were sorry. We had bad communications equipment and we're sorry. We should have probably revisited whether or not it was smart to set this in a Lenina. We're sorry, but that was just a choice we made. And so you can go through that review and see all that, we're sorry, we made mistakes. But what really matters is when you get into it, for at least the discretionary function aspect. Is you see in the chronology of events that occur, that they do exactly what we need. And we have evidence of exactly what we need to get around discretionary function. They took an action over which they had no discretion. And what that is, is unannounced ignitions. And so in what we see from the burn plan itself, which we now have a copy of. The only individual or individuals that can make decisions about ignition. About what is set on fire and when. And where are the firing boss and the burn boss? And what we have in the timeline, we see that they, they rush out. They do the test burn, everything goes well at about eleven thirty in the morning on the, on the sixth. And they say, okay, we're gonna go forward. We're gonna split into two teams, A team, Alpha Team and Bravo Team, B Team. And we're gonna start our planned ignitions, and they start that process and they're moving along just great until at one fifty-one. We see in the notes, in the chronology, that one of the trainees. On the firing team for Bravo. that one of the trainees on the firing team for Bravo, the B Team, asked if they could take an igniter in one direction and in burn a line and then hang it up for the night. And they were given that approval by the firing boss. And so they went down there and then in the notes immediately after that, on the chronology, it says that the igniter that took the fire to the toe returned unannounced, so without permission, with a second pass back up to the fire line, bringing fire with them. So here we see at one fifty-one PM, the first unauthorized fire. That's a breach of the burn plan because the firing boss didn't agree to that, didn't approve it, and the burn boss didn't approve it. And then immediately after that, they wait to see as the fires merge from the two lines that were burned. And they note that the first major or large spot fire formed at that time. And as you go through the chronology past that point, so past this deviation from the burn plan, not following the instructions of the superior, the firing boss, where it trainee burn mission, you see that they're just chasing spots. It appears that this would be the first domino that was touched that sent this wildfire in the direction it took. Because they started to move assets over to the B side to fight the spot fire that was created by this unannounced, unapproved line of fire that was brought. That then pulled resources from other areas. Then you see that they are chasing spots, they're trying to get them under control. And for the next two hours, that's what you see. And for a period of time, they stop ignitions. Have basically about an hour, hour and a half before it's declared a wildfire. They stop ignitions because they're just chasing spots and they're under a hold ignition order. And the Bravo firing trainee that did the first unannounced burn that they were not approved for went ahead and did it again and said in the middle of the hold ignition order, I'm gonna take a fire, uh an igniter in a direction and burn another line. Firing boss jumped on shortly after that and said, no, don't do it. And was told it's too late, they already started. And that again, set unapproved, unannounced fire in in motion. And about forty-five minutes after that, it was declared a wildfire. And so we see within the very chronology that the government has provided in its review, the information that we think is necessary to get around discretionary function. They had no discretion. The Bravo firing trainee had no discretion to set that fire without approval from the firing boss. And that's why they have all the radios. And then we've talked to people that have been involved in these prescribed burns and they will tell you. You don't set a fire that is not approved by somebody above you that has the authority to make that decision. Here they did that, that deviated from the plan. It set in motion the dominoes falling that led to the wa- the fire, the prescribed fire being out of control and being deemed a wildfire. And we believe that these facts are very critical to getting around discretionary function. And if there is no compensation fund legislation that's passed, it's the argument we think is gonna win to get you compensation for what you've lost because, at least from the way we see it, somebody set a fire that they weren't allowed to set.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, so real quickly, uh that brings us around to uh us lawyers and whether or not you wanna hire us lawyers to pursue your claim. Uh so um you know, why, why is it you should consider uh the law firm of Level, Level Eastern and Faribault in team teamed up with Watts Gara. Um like I told, mentioned earlier, uh I got involved in this case real early on because of Mike Gregory before there were any other lawyers looking at it because they were all concerned about discretionary function. Uh but one reason Mike Gregory called me is because uh we have a long history of fighting fires or fire cases, wildfire cases. I tried my first uh wildfire case, even even though for from Amarillo. And yes, uh most of our experience in wildfires are primarily grass fires. Uh but they do involve structures and trees, et cetera. But I thought I tried my first wildfire case back in two thousand and we've been handling those cases ever since. Uh you you know, the ranging from uh the two thousand six fire, which uh the North Fire that we were in burned approximately half a million acres, took uh seven lives. Uh we represented property owner, we represented the property owner where the fire started. We represented the property owner where they were finally able to get the fire out. We represented property owners in between and we represented the family of or the families of people who lost loved ones to that fire that got burned up in that fire. So and then we've been doing these cases ever since and uh just seemed like every La Nina, uh we end up with new fire. So we've got experience doing that. And this is what I've just talked about here. And then Watts Gara. Now, who is Watts Gara and why did I bring them in? Uh Watts Gara is a law firm headquartered in San Antonio. Um I've known Michael Watts and Frank Gara for many, many years. Uh and then in past years, starting about twenty seventeen, I think, uh I actually, we had a case in Amarillo that was a big nasty electrical fire case that caused some horrendous harm to a couple of electricians. And uh it was, it was big and had lots of defendants and lots of complications. And I brought Michael Watts and his firm in to help on that case. And together, uh we worked on that case for three years and ended up um getting several very good results. Any anyway, I got to work closely with Michael Watts and his firm and came to know them and trust them. Uh likewise, they know me and trust me. Uh we all work well together. Uh and so one of the first calls I made when it became clear that uh this is a case that we think is worth taking. But given the scope and the number of people involved, et cetera, we were gonna need help. Uh so I called Michael Watts and he eventually uh agreed to participate with us in the representation of our clients in this case. So why, why Michael Watts for this case? Michael Watts from San Antonio. Uh and the these are slides that Michael has prepared and often he is in these meetings and he would talk about this stuff, but I'll talk about it for him. Uh Michael and his firm, they've been doing mass tort litigation, which is what this is ever since Michael got out of law school, uh which is probably about thirty years ago. And so they've got extensive experience in big mass tort litigation like this. Um you know, products liability, you name it. Uh if if you've heard of some big nasty products liability mass tort litigation, Michael Watts and his firm has been involved. Uh bellwether, bellwether case, mass torts, it's not a class action, so what you have is a lot of different suits. They're similar in their liability facts, but everybody has their own independent um damage claims. And so everybody has their own case, but the way those things are handled, usually the courts will pick a handful of the cases, calling them bellwether cases. And they'll try those bellwether cases and that that tells everybody, okay, here's what a jury's gonna do. And so it helps guide and facilitate settlement of all the many cases. And so he's tried several of the bellweathers. Uh he's handled cases that involve many, 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 many people all at one time. Many more people than are involved in the Hermits Peak case. Uh he also, in these kind of cases, they usually put together a committee of kinda like the lead lawyers that are representing uh a lot of the people in the mass courts to help kinda guide the case. And and Michael is often uh almost always on that committee and he's often the head of that committee. So they've got lots of experience. Now, in fire cases, their experience is more recent, starting in, I think, twenty seventeen. But they uh you can see represented numerous, numerous fire, fire cases along the West Coast. Many of these you've heard about. Uh Dr. Brown mentioned some of them that involve PG&E. Uh and so anyway, this was Michael Watts' firm representing literally tens of thousands of people in these, in these fire cases. So they've got the people, they've got the systems, um et cetera, to handle these large wildfire cases. Then they've done well in those cases too, very, very well. Uh those were big cases and uh they were able to develop uh good facts. And so here you can see are some of the many humongous uh verdicts and settlements that Michael and his firm have been able to put together. The one that's most important here is this one. And yes, that is spelled correctly with a B. And that's out of uh several of those Pacific Gas and Electric Fires. Um Michael was the the lead plaintiff's lawyer in negotiating that thirteen point five billion dollar settlement for the victims of those fires. Like I said, the over the years, they've represented people all over the country and lots and lots and lots and lots of folk in in mass report cases. Uh we just talked about the PG&E fire. He just this is some press that talks about Michael's role in those PG&E fires and uh that he had the largest group. He ended up being the guy that uh negotiated the deal. Um intimately involved in it. So in any event, he um, there you go, seventy thousand fire victims out of all those California PG&E cases. So Michael knows what he's doing, his firm is well acquainted with this, they know what they're doing. I like him, I trust him, I've worked with him, they work hard and they work well. And that's why I wanted them on my team and they are on my team. Uh so they, they also have perfected uh a good way of communicating with so many clients. And this is one method now that we have remote meetings. Uh but we also have live meetings. Speaking of which, like I mentioned, we got one in Mora on the thirtieth, if anybody wants to attend. But Michael likes to show how he gets around to meetings. And so thi- this is just uh one week in April. Uh all the, the live town hall meetings he went to to meet with clients and kind of do what we're doing here, talk about the cases, what's happening, et cetera. This included going to Ria Dosa, where um we're in this case with Michael. Uh by the way, my firm, I did mention, we are from Amarillo, but uh we also practice out here in New Mexico. I'm licensed in New Mexico, as is Hannah. You've heard her talking, so. Uh and we're pretty close down the road, but also we've opened this uh office here for now anyway, in Roschiata, where I'm at right now. And we represent people down in Ria Dosa as well. So now this is a big deal right here. They have the ability to fund this litigation. This is big litigation. It's gonna cost a lot of money because there's a lot of people that have been harmed. And if we have, and and we have to fight against the United States government, who's got all the money ever. So uh it's, it could be a big nasty and that could require a lot of money to pursue all these claims. And uh because of Watts Gara's success over the years, they they've got the funding. And uh they can, these are just some examples of some of the big mass port litigation and how much Watts Gara was able to fund for these various mass port things. And so we're about to get to the huge one, which is, uh there it is. All the California fires, almost thirty-seven million dollars uh that they put up to fund it. And uh that was put up on a contingent basis like we talked about, so. Um Michael's the real deal. Uh his firm is good. We uh I mentioned how it would work. We'd work on a contingent fee basis, meaning you don't have to pay anything unless we get a recovery. The fee percentage would be twenty-five percent. Uh by the way, let me close that out. Hannah, and you pull up that fee agreement, we'll show, show it to everybody real quick and walk through that real fast. It's short. Here we go. Okay, zoom in so I can talk, take them a paragraph at a time. Uh if you don't already have one of these, we'll send you a packet that includes this. Uh the first paragraph, that's where you are outlining the authority that you give to the lawyers. You are authorizing us to act as your attorneys and on your behalf to uh to prosecute your claims arising out of the Hermits Peak fire. That would include essentially whatever is necessary uh in, from a legal standpoint, gathering evidence, uh experts, if we have to take depositions, filing suits, on and on and on. You would authorize us to do that. One thing you agree to do is co- cooperate with us and that means you need, we need to be able to get up uh in touch with you always. And it also means that we need you to help us pull together the evidence of your damages, et cetera. So that's what that is. By by the way, that last sentence there says it's gone away there. Just so everybody knows, no settlement will be made without the client's consent. This is your case. And so it's your decision whether or not to settle it, not the lawyers. Now, we'll certainly advise you, but ultimately it's your decision. Okay, next page. Moving slow, there it is. Okay, contingent fee arrangement. Where now, some of you may have had and some of you signed a previous form which said that the percentage or or the contingent fee was thirty-three and one-third percent or the maximum amount allowed by law, whichever is less. Okay, uh when, when we started taking these cases, that's before we had all the information about the start of the fire. There were rumors around and some indication that there may have been a power line that was involved in at least one of the fires. If there had been a power line and a power company was a defendant, that would be a state law claim. And so uh our usual fee for any kind of contention fee work is gonna be thirty percent, uh sometimes even higher. But so in light of that, we made it thirty, a third or the maximum amount allowed by law because we also knew that it could be federal claims. And if you have federal claims, there is a statute that caps the fees at twenty-five percent. Okay, well, now we know it's just federal claims, so we know the fee is gonna be twenty-five percent. Okay, so now it says, and we'll be circulating this new one uh for people who haven't already signed up. The net effect is the same, but it will say this, twenty-five percent or the maximum amount, amount allowed by law, whichever is less. Okay? Um then expenses, and I've kinda talked about how that worked on expenses. And both of those things are contingent. You don't have to pay anything unless we get you a recovery. Uh obviously, we talked about the fact that this is mass tort. There's lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of people harmed. Um typically, a lawyer represents just one client at a time unless the client's consent to allowing the lawyers to represent more than one person. And so that's what that provision is right there in paragraph five, is that you know that we will be representing a lot of people so that we can pool resources, we can uh obtain economies of scale, particularly on expenses and that we have more leverage um in fighting the case. But you have to give us permission and that's what that paragraph does. Law and venue, paragraph six, in the event we do something wrong and you need to sue us, a lot of times you'll see contracts that say if you sue us, you gotta come to Manhattan. a lot of times you'll see contracts that say if you sue us, you gotta come to Manhattan and sue us in Manhattan under New York law, or maybe you gotta go out to San Diego and sue us in California. And we don't do that. We're here in New Mexico and we don't believe in all of that kind of stuff. If you need to sue us, you, you can sue us right here in the state of New Mexico, Santa Fe County, which is where these claims will be administered. So that's, that's that. Then we haven't done anything improper, you know, we didn't go to, go to your doorstep and knock on your door, do anything unethical in soliciting you. Things that we are allowed to do is direct mail, and I think most of you received mail from us. We can also send email. And so most of you received email. Or you can contact us, or if you know somebody who, who knows us, that kind of thing. Those are all allowed and that's how we've operated. And you're making sure you're confirming that we haven't done anything wrong. Then if that's agreeable, the next page. By the way, go back one, Hannah. This one blank creates confusion. But right here, this blank is just the date you sign it. Okay, so next page is where you sign it. Who needs to sign it? The people who own the property that was damaged. And that could be multiple people. Or it could be an entity, or it could be a trust, or it could be an estate. Okay, so a typical case, husband and wife own a property that gets burned up. Entitled to the real estate is in husband and wife. So husband and wife both need to sign. If you have an estate, for example, that's still open and there's an executor, well, the executor of the estate would have the power to sign it. If you have any entity, and let's say an LLC, perhaps you've got it set up for a sole managing member or a sole member that runs the company, then it would need to be signed by that authorized representative of the company. You may have a situation where there's a lot of family members who have lost property in a house or in a barn or whatever. Some may have personal property that was on real property. If they had property that was lost, they need to sign the agreement so that we're authorized to try to recover for them. And so that's what that means. Next slide, please, Hannah. We need to know your actual mailing address, which may well, and for most people at least, has been different than the damage address. We need to know the damage address so we can find the property. All right. And we're gonna be asking lots of questions about making sure that we have located all your property that has been harmed. And we've run into this again and again and again, where people are thinking about their house or their structure that was burned, but they're not thinking about that lot they own over across the way that was unimproved, but all the trees burned up on it. So we need to be able to find all those pieces of property and we need your help in doing that. And then, of course, we need your contact information. I just kind of discussed this. If there are any minors, then they're gonna need their parent or guardian to sign for them. We need to know your full legal name, date of birth, that kind of stuff. And then here's where you would return it to. Okay, and there's options. You can email it to us, you can mail it to us at Amarillo, or you bring it over here. We got a mailbox here in Roschiata, as well as a little office with a lockbox out front, so you can bring that. And of course, we're happy to answer questions. We're happy to, you've got our email address, there's Caitlin's right there. And we're happy to send out information and we're happy to answer questions and we're happy to answer phone calls. And so you guys just let us know. And is there anybody that has, we've gone on long enough then? Well, go back to that. Yes, I saw that now, Hannah, and I do need to touch on that so you'll know what that is. This will be part of what we send you. There will be various questionnaires depending on the kind of damages you have. But everybody needs to fill out this one, which is called the Claims Questionnaire. And this just tries to get all the kind of information we're gonna need to identify the various kinds of property and the various kinds of damage that you had. Okay, and so this will kind of walk you through that and outline. Now, there'll be other questionnaires that really dig deep, particularly into contents. And we can deal with those later. But these are the kinds of questions you could see from that Claims Questionnaire. It just kind of walks you through the basic categories of harm that you may have suffered. And this helps us lawyers start identifying what to look for and helps Dr. Brown find your property so we can go out there and look at it. So I've talked quite a while. Is anybody, I think I saw Hannah, did you say there was?
There are some questions. We have a question. Does Dr. Brown call the clients before going to their property?
There you go, Dr. Brown. That one's on you. He tries to, is the short answer. You're muted.
What was the question?
The question was, do you contact the landowner before going out on their property?
Generally, I do, but sometimes if there's, if the land is just barren, I could just go out there and do the properties. I have made mistakes. Somebody had recently built a house. So I, I called them and but I can call everybody if they want me to. Sometimes I don't, sometimes I don't get an answer.
Perfect. Joe, another question. What about coverage for future damages if our property has not been flooded yet?
Well, here's the, the basic way that works. For you to be entitled to recover damages from the government, you're gonna need to show that either the flames or the floods caused by the flames have touched your property. Okay, so I mean, and you know, there's, there's a lot of people that, and a lot of businesses particularly, who've suffered some serious harm to their business just because people aren't coming out here and spending money anymore, something like that. But if they haven't been touched by the flames or the flood, then they're not gonna have that claim. Now, like you inferred there, you may yet have that claim. Because there are a whole lot of people that we represent that did, the flames didn't touch their property, but the floods have by golly touched the property. And the floods are a foreseeable consequence of the flames. And so that is, that ties to the prescribed burn. And so people will be able to recover. And so if, if it hadn't happened yet, and it happens in the future, then you, you may have a claim when that happens. Any more questions?
I don't have any more on my end, Joe.
Okay, everybody, we appreciate your patience. Looks like we took about two hours. Wow. A lot of people here. We appreciate your participation. Again, don't hesitate to contact us. You can go, for example, for that form we're suggesting you might want to use for hazardous debris removal. You can go to our website and download that form. You can also contact us by email or call the office if you have questions and we're sure happy to, to talk to you and, and work through all this. So with that, I'm gonna sign off and thank everybody. Once again, thank you and have a good evening.